Detroit City Council Meeting of May 9th, 2016. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Joe Crabbe from Woodside Bible Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. So please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge afterwards.
First off, it's a joy and an honor to be here. Thank you for your hard work in making Troy truly a great place to live, to serve, to work, and to raise a family. Let us pray. Holy and heavenly Father God, we thank you for who you are, that you are a good, loving, holy, and just God, for your mercy, for the love that you show in each and every one of us through your son, Jesus Christ. God, I thank you for those here in this room, Father, their desire to serve, their desire to truly make the world around them a better place, Father. And I pray that through the work of our hands here of God, that you would bless, lead, and guide us accordingly. Lord, we love you, we praise you, we give you all the glory, and we pray this in the name of your son and our Savior, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor. We have the privilege this evening of having Cub Scout Pack 1718 from Costello Elementary School that's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and here they come. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good job. Great job, guys. If you would just stay there for a little bit, we'll be down shortly. Thank you. Detroit City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Here.
I did receive correspondence from Councilman Campbell that he would be out of the county this evening for the special study session along with tonight's council meeting, so I will move to excuse the absence of Councilman Campbell at the special study meeting and the regular city council meeting of May 9th, 2016, due to being out of the county. Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington that we excuse the absence of Councilman Campbell this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda is certificates of recognition and special presentations, and we have four of them this evening. C1 is a special recognition to Cub Scout Pack 1718 from Costello Elementary School for cleaning up J.C. Park, and I would like to have them meet me at the podium, and I'd like to present a proclamation to you guys this evening. I'll be right there. We do have a short video that we'd like to play this evening, so if you watch the monitors, this is the Cub Scouts in action. How about the little ones come up here? Does that look good? Thank you all so much for what you've done for our community. You've made us all proud, and thank you for being volunteers. Without volunteers, our city would suffer greatly, so thank you so much for doing and cleaning up J.C. Park. So, what I have here today is a proclamation that is written specifically just for you, and it's signed by myself and all members of the city council that are behind you here today. So I'd like to read this into the record so that everyone knows what you did for our city, okay? And then I'm going to give you all an opportunity to introduce yourselves this evening, okay? To be on camera. Is that pretty cool? So whereas Cub Scout Pack 1718 operates out of Costello Elementary School and runs a year-round program with a group of 29 boys, community service is an important part of being a Cub Scout, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And being good and quiet too, right? Right. So whereas, new this year, the Cub Scout Pack introduced a community service patch for boys who participated in at least three of their community service activities, including cleaning up a city park and the grounds at Costello Elementary School, distributing flyers and collecting for scouting for food, making cards and singing carols for residents of America House, creating and donating 12 cat houses for the Michigan Humane Society, and shoveling snow in their neighborhoods. And whereas, on March 26th, 2016, as part of the community service patch, the Cub Scouts, their den leaders, and Cub Master volunteered to help clean up J.C. Park. The cleanup included raking and clearing J.C. Park of leaves, sticks, and litter. And whereas, this year's community service events culminate on June 11th with the annual, much anticipated, washing of the pack's adopted AH-1F Cobra helicopter on display at Selfridge Air Force National Guard Base. That's going to be pretty exciting, correct? So now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council extends special recognition to Cub Scout Pack 1718, and I'm going to ask each of you, your names are on this proclamation, I'm going to ask each of you to come to this microphone, tell us your name and introduce yourself. And let's start with you. Right here, talk right in here.
Jackson.
Real easy, just give me your name.
Michael.
Olivia.
Come on up, guys.
Gavin.
Give us your last name.
Hudson.
Kaiten Hambury.
Jackson Springer.
Gabriel Olami.
Elijah Burt.
Ryan Harper.
Matthew Schreiber.
Christopher Matichuk.
Anand Mukherjee.
William Delaney.
Alex Bartel.
Benjamin Swales.
Thank you, guys, and of course, the den leaders, Chris Delaney, Tom Macharek?
Matichuk.
Matichuk, Erika Resch, Mark Schreiber, Committee Chair Mike Sirmack? Sirmack. Sirmack, and Cub Master Ian Burt for their dedication and commitment to our community. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council and all Troy residents extend heartfelt appreciation to Cub Scout Pack 1718 for increasing awareness about the importance of volunteering in one's community. You are all an inspiration to the Troy community and a credit to yourself, your family, the Troy School District, Costello Elementary School, and of course, the city of Troy. I present this on the ninth day of May, 2016. I've said it's signed by myself and all members of the city council. Thank you all for what you've done for our community, and congratulations, guys. C2 is a special recognition to members of Detroit Public Library Teen Poetry Team, Elements, and I would ask Regina Shandra, Raul Duda, Zania Cor. Help me here, come here. Help me here.
Zama Shanga.
Is she here?
Right here.
Come here, help me, help me. Introduce yourself.
Zama Shanga Butilezi.
Okay, see, that wasn't that easy. Rashiko Rao, is that close? Okay. Vidica?
Agalaker.
Agalaker, and Jenny Bowden. They won first place at Louder Than a Bomb 2016, a statewide youth poetry competition held at Wayne State University. There were teams from Ann Arbor, Detroit, Madison Heights, Frazier, and more, and it was the Elements' very first time participating, correct?
Yeah.
So, on behalf of the city council and the city of Troy, I'd like to present to you a proclamation, and I'm going to read this into the record, okay? Let me step over. Whereas Detroit Public Library has a newly formed teen poetry team called Elements, consisting of high school students.
Zama Shanga Butilezi.
Sonia Cor.
Rashiko Rao.
Vidica Agalaker.
And Raul Duta.
And whereas, on Saturday, March 19th, Elements won first place, and the first-place prize at Louder Than a Bomb 2016, a statewide youth poetry competition held at Wayne State University. There were teams, as I indicated, from the area, including Ann Arbor, Detroit, Madison Heights, and Frazier, and this, as I indicated, was the team's very first time participating. And whereas...
Zama Shanga Butilezi.
Sonia Cor.
Rashiko Rao.
Vidica Agalaker.
And Raul Duta.
Each individually performed an original poem, then four of the students read a group poem that they all wrote together. Their team score led them to victory. And whereas Louder Than a Bomb brings hundreds of high school poets together in ways that are unthinkable in most other settings, a shared love of writing and performing creates bonds where typically there are boundaries. Students surmount culture and socio-economic differences to take part in an experience where young writers learn about themselves while listening to the words of others. And whereas, this is possible because of Inside Out Literary Arts Projects has combined friendly competition with a grounded, contemporary, and populist approach to poetry. This approach creates a culture where the telling of honest, authentic stories with the voices of young witnesses is not only valued, but is essential in building bridges between isolated populations. Now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council extends special recognition to Troy Public Library's Teen Poetry Team, Elements, for their creativity and dedication to poetry, collaboration, and friendly competition with other teens throughout the region. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council and all Troy residents congratulate each and every one of you for being shining examples of teens making a difference, and wish all the high school students continue to success in all endeavors. It's presented this ninth day of May, 2016, signed by myself, all members of the city council. Thank you for what you've done for our community, and congratulations. You also have your reward, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to recite a poem for us?
No. Please. Okay. So, two months ago, the seven of us, along with our mentor Olivia, went to Detroit to participate in Louder Than a Bomb Detroit. It's a satellite event of Chicago's LTAB, which happens to be the largest youth poetry festival in the world. This year, nine teams competed for the honor of winning the grand slam. Somehow, we ended up with the trophy. I joke, but that night, it really did seem like a miracle. When we walked into Wayne State University on March 19th, none of us were fully expecting to win. We were there to compete, yes, but we were there to observe, to absorb, to learn. We were probably a bit too hard on ourselves. Twice in the first round, we scored a row of perfect tens, and yet we dismissed our own performance to such a degree that three of us were already on our way home before they called our name for first place. What we hadn't realized was that our meager month of preparation had drawn us together and exposed our hearts like no other experience had before. LTAB has impacted all seven of us. Each and every one of us has become more confident, both in ourselves and in the words we allow ourselves to say. We've learned poetry's origins, the beats of our city, how to rap, projection, and most of all, how to let the words flow like electricity from inside our hearts to through our pens and onto the pages without shying away from the shock value. We're all definitely on board to go back next year with the intention of defending our title. In the future, we'd like to compete more, to travel to even greater competitions, and prove ourselves to the world over and over again. LTAB Detroit has hopefully only been the beginning. It has been an honor to represent the city of Troy and the Troy Public Library at this festival. Thank you all for recognizing us here today.
Municipal Clerk designation from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks to our very own Cheryl Stewart, the administrative aide in the city clerk's office. Good evening Cheryl. How are you?
Good.
Cheryl, on behalf of the city of Troy and the Troy City Council, it's my honor to present to you this international institute from municipal clerks that hereby confers the title of Certified Municipal Clerk upon Cheryl A. Stewart, CMC, who has completed the requirements prescribed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks for certification. Congratulations Cheryl, thank you for representing the city so well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm honored here to receive this designation from the IIMC, and I would like to thank City Manager Kishnik, Mayor and the city council, and City Clerk Aileen Dixon for supporting educational opportunities. The Certified Municipal Clerk designation represents approximately 120 hours of education as well as substantial experience working in a municipality. I feel very fortunate to have clerks' organizations like the IIMC that provide great opportunities as well as resources among municipal clerks. It's those opportunities as well as your support that helps us do business great. Thank you.
C4 is Rev Up Troy, and I'd like to introduce Siem Raaza, our management assistant, and Aileen Dixon, the city clerk, who are going to guide us through this program that, Siem, I know you've worked very hard on, and it's all yours.
So, thank you Mayor and the city council. I would just like to make a couple comments before Siem does his presentation. I've been in the clerk's office for about 15 years, and the entire time I've been in there, and I know before I started, we have wanted to get the schools, the kids, the youth of Troy, involved in elections, voting, working elections, and we always had the idea, but we never had the way to make the connection with the school district. And so, through a conversation when Siem started in the manager's office as a next assistant, we were just talking, and it just kind of sprung from there, and we're super excited about this initiative that's beginning, and I will let Siem take over.
So, good evening, thank you for your time. So, as stated, my name's Siem Raaza, and so my family moved here in 2008, my mom and my brother on the back, actually, and so I went off to, I went to Troy High, he went to Troy High, my sister went to IA, and I went to college out on the East Coast, and I came back for a semester, and I've been a next assistant since January in the manager's office. So, I'm here to tell you a story. So I was working with Aileen, just stuffing ballots in January, and we were talking about work for the election, and she said, "Do you want to work as an inspector?" And I thought, "That's boring, no." But initially, you know, she described it in a better way. She said that, you know, "It's just a way to try to get, you know, voters or fellow citizens have a fun and efficient time." And when she said it in that way, you know, it really clicked with me. So then, what I decided to do was, I, we thought about ways to really expand the program, and ways of trying, sorry, just a bit, just a bit stressed. So, Aileen and I talked about ways to get more people involved, because, you know, there's me, but then there's quite a few other people that could get involved. So, I went to the schools with her help and with the help of Cheryl. I went to Troy High, I went to Athens, met with the guidance counselors there, teachers, students, the clubs, I went to the teen group at the library, and what we were able to accomplish was something pretty big. So we usually have about five students work the day of the election, and this year we had 50. It was a 10-fold increase in about five weeks, and it was, and we had two questions going in, like, would students want to do it? And yes, they did, and they did the job really, really well. So that takes us to our next question of, as you can see on the flyer, it's distributed before all of you, but we thought about what more can we do besides just, you know, getting students to work the day of the election? Because right now, we have 1,000 Troy seniors graduating this month and next month, and many of them are just going to leave. They might come back to Troy once every few months, once every year, maybe, I don't even know, maybe even less than that. So, there are three things that Rev Up Troy is really aimed at. The first is student-led registration drives, and what that means is, there's a lot of wasted staff time, there's a lot of residents that want to vote, but they just can't due to the election law. So what we can do is get students registered to vote and be proactive about this, so they're not trying to scramble and get a ballot in October. Another thing is having education on election law, so, you know, mock elections and cooperation with AP government. And then the third thing is continued recruitment of election inspectors, because something I want to say is that the training was in this room, but students weren't here just for extra credit. They were here to work for their city, and we had dozens of them right here. So it's something that can really spark a good change. We went from five to 50, and you never know, maybe some of these students become lifeguards, and after becoming lifeguard, after becoming lifeguards, next assistants, and then just on and on. So we had a great time doing this, and we've got a good plan going forward, and I just wanted to let you know about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Siem. What a great job you did, and I know you're going to be leaving us shortly.
Yeah, I'm retiring this week.
Retiring this week at ripe old age of what?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, you're retiring at eighteen.
Yeah.
I think it really should be pointed out that you did all of this...
It was with Aileen, with Stephanie, with Cheryl, it was a team effort.
I understand, but you volunteered.
Yeah, I...
We didn't, we're not paying you a dime, are we?
Not at the time.
No. I think it's just outstanding that you would come back to our community and help us on your own time. I know you've been in the city manager's office for a few months, and, you know, on behalf of the city council, we certainly appreciate what you've done for our community, going from five... Going from five to 50 is kind of an incredible number for anything, and I think you're going to be sorely missed, and maybe we can find a way to get you back here.
Thank you for the kind words.
And what was that little college that you go to?
I go to Harvard.
Yeah, you go to Harvard, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but thank you, and I just want to say personally, I've really grown a lot here, and the whole city staff, and everyone's just been really kind to me, and really, it's just, it's been an incredible learning experience, and it's just not what I thought local government would be, you know, and that, you know, you get this perception that, you know, I'm sorry to get off topic, but when you go to the East Coast, you think you're so big, you know, like, you think that, that like, I'm, you know, I'm going to be the future, this, that, but then, when you come back to local government, you realize that, like, this is where the work happens, you know, like, people do good work here, and it helps people here. It's not just about, you know, the East Coast and DC and all that, and this has just really restored a lot of the faith in local government that I've had, so it's just, it's just been, I'm just very grateful, so thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, Sim, thank you. I know City Manager Brian Kishnik would like to say something about Sim, I know.
Sure, and first of all, Mayor and City Council and everyone here, it's also about the program, the next assistant's program that Maggie Hughes is overseeing for a couple, for a year now, a year and a half, where we actually bring people into City Hall and local government, young people, and educate them, but we get a great product from them, and it just goes to show how great, and I know it's probably overstated, but I don't think you can say it enough, the quality of young people in this community is absolutely outstanding. I don't know how many of you know where Harvard is, what city and state, but maybe you can talk to Sim afterwards and get a little education on that, but he was a true joy to have in our office, and everyone appreciated him, and he fit right in, right away, Mayor, and so it's just, it's just a testimony to the entire program that Sim was a part of, and, you know, we are able to bring some of these people back, so even though when they're 18 to 22, they may think they're not coming back, but Troy's a great place, and there's a lot of people who come back, and I wouldn't be surprised here, so.
I know Sim told us, told me this afternoon, that he would have never envisioned himself coming back to Troy, and that has changed, I know that has changed. So, Harvard in Connecticut?
The other school.
The other school? Thanks again, Sim.
Appreciate it.
There are no carryover items this evening, so next on the agenda is public hearings. I will open a public, they have a public hearing this evening, this is to establish a special assessment district for asphalt paving of the Westerly, 220 feet of Cherry in Section 27, standard resolution number four. See, City Assessor Nino Lucari is here this evening to introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I did request a postponement on this because I didn't want to follow Sim, and I knew that was going to be a tough gig there, but he's just been a lot of fun to have around. As you mentioned, it's a public hearing for paving the Westerly, 220 feet of Cherry Street in Section 27. About three weeks ago, you approved standard resolutions one, two, and three, which basically set up this hearing, allowed us to prepare the cost estimates, and for Steve's people in engineering to distribute some of the monies out of their budget, should they be appropriated in that manner. This is a little more difficult one than we've ever had before, because the city has never paved or never created the road itself. There is no roadway here, as you can see on the screen, it's a greenbelt, it's a platted road, but there is no gravel roadway, no one's driving on this, people are playing on it and cutting the grass and doing things like that. So, in that vein, we have never done this for residents or developers, so, and that's what this request is about, they want us to make the road from the scratch, and that's why the cost is so high, I think it's $93,000, $91,000 for this project, and normally, we would just charge the residents for the asphalt itself, the city would fix the roadbed, adjust the drainage as needed, none of that is here. So, the full cost of that would be special assessed to the residents, about 88% of whom have approved of this, this project, they signed the petition, they submitted it to the Clerk's Office, I verified the ownership of that project. Again, I would just, staff's recommendation is that this not go through. We are not of the mind that the public's money should be spent to help a developer build. I have photos, are they available, Doug? Bingo. These are some areas where roads were cut in, this is Enterprise in front of you in Section 27, this is a little bit south and a little bit east of the subject area. It was, it was a gravel road at that point in time, developers came in here and put a bunch of houses in, they did pave it, we've got curbs, gutters, very nicely done subdivision. Oops. There we go. This one, I think, is the most pertinent one that you'll have, this is Langston Street, it's just on the other side of Livinoy from us, just a little bit north of Big Beaver, and it's east of Livinoy. This was a platted street, there was no gravel here, developer came in here, he put in, as you can see, this is concrete, we've got sidewalks, curbs, gutters, he brought all the utilities in here, and he got six houses out of this project, all that cost was borne by the developer. The subject area we're looking at on Cherry Street, my best estimate is there's about seven lots there, so it can and has been done. This is an extension of Booth Street, what used to be Booth Street, it's actually Quill Drive now. Again, all this property on the south side of the road there, it was just a large piece of land, a developer came in, bought it all up, split it, put in the roadways, moved the sewer and the sanitary and the water across here so he could develop this, there's eight houses in this development. This is an area just west of the subject property and immediately south of it, no, this is Section 28, I'm so sorry. This is another area where the streets were platted, but they were not improved, and so the developers came in here, and they put all of these improvements in here. And this is the one that's just south of the subject area that we're talking about, and I believe Mr. Lamb was actually involved in this. This is a redevelopment of an existing subdivision, and all these roadways and sidewalks and utilities were, well, the utilities were there, but the roadways and sidewalks were installed by the developer. And this was an interesting one in Section 25, so this would be on the east side of John R., just north of Maple, this is the old Sussex Park subdivision, there was a private individual that went through here and bought up about 80% of these lots, they were 40-foot lots back in the day, and he just held on to them for several years, and eventually, a developer came in and bought those 80% from him and picked up the other 20%. They did some reconfiguration of the streets, that's all concrete now, sidewalks, curb, gutter, and they built a subdivision out of that, and the developer paid all those costs, the city was not involved in that. And this one here is in Section 9, this is immediately south of Square Lake Road and just west of Livinoy, you'll, it's hard to read that, but that's actually Wright Street there, that's a pretty long street in Section 9, and those four houses that you see there, that was two lots, and a developer bought those, split the northerly two off, had two on the back, but he didn't have any road frontage, so he put that roadway in there himself, that T-turn. Nowadays, we'd have given it a different name than Wright Street, but it's still Wright Street, so I think that's the end, right Doug? Yeah, that's it. So, as you can see, this situation occurs all the time, and the developers or the homeowners, they incur the cost if you want to develop on vacant, like, this is really, this, this whole thing is no different than buying a piece of acreage and putting eight houses in there, you bring in your own road, you bring in your own sanitary, you bring in your own water. That's why staff's recommendation here is not to approve this special assessment request. And before you open up the public hearing, just as a...
I did already open it up.
Okay, as a recap, this is what we have on Develop Street. This is an inside joke here. And this is what they're requesting, a roadway, okay? So, that's it for the Legos for me, okay? Thank you very much, I'll be right off to the side, or if you have any questions right now, I can answer those.
Any questions for Nino from City Council? Councilman Henderson.
You had mentioned 88% of residents approve, I'm assuming that's the petitioner?
Well, it's 88% of the frontage, yeah, the petitioner owns three of those parcels.
Three of those parcels, so that leaves 22% right, if my math's right.
Yeah.
Do those residents disapprove?
Well, they didn't sign the petition, so I can't tell you what their thoughts are. There are, Mr. Lamb is here, I think Mr. Kilmer is here, he's not actually in the district, and there are a couple other residents here that I'm sure you'll be hearing from shortly.
Any questions for Nino?
Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Richard Kilmer, Troy resident, has asked to speak on this item.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Richard Kilmer at 62 Hickory, I own the property where Cherry ends, on the north side.
On the north side?
Yes, sir. And I disapprove of this, I think it should stay the way it is. When they built that sub, Mr. Lamb come in, "Well, here's a check, we're buying your property." I said, "I didn't negotiate." Mr. Lamb will not negotiate with nobody, far as I can see. He called my wife once and upset her, he sent me two letters, which is on file down the Engineering Department. They weren't where you would negotiate with people, I wouldn't, and I will not negotiate with Mr. Lamb about any of my property. Now, I have a neighbor next door who's here, likes to speak, he's his son's social security, far as I know of, and I would like to disapprove this and leave it the way it is. I keep the, his lot, my lot clear, and half the, where the city, where it ends down there. And the water mains and everything are on my side, what I understand, they can put them in, but I disapprove, and I don't like what he wrote to my wife and myself and on the phone when I was working. But he had never sat down and negotiated after that, and he thinks he could just walk in and do what he wants. Like I say, when he first built the subdivision, he walked over and said, "Here's a check for $2,000, I'm buying your property for $10,000." My wife and I said, "What the heck going on here? We didn't talk about anything about this property." So, I'd like to stay where it is, I know the City Engineering Department has disapproved this, and I think the council should go with the city approves, states in their letters and stuff, that they'll disapprove, that's straight on Hickory, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilmer. Call on Gladys Berth.
Okay, I'm Ralph Berth, and we own a property which goes to Cherry Street, and we adamantly oppose this venture, we don't want to have, because eventually, Mr. Lamb probably wants to have a street through, and there's children involved, it goes right to the grade school, so I don't want anything to do with having that paved, and I'd like to have it, I'd like to have that stay the way it is right now. I'm in agreement with Mr. Kilmer, and it would be safer to leave it the way it is right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry, I met with Mrs. Berth, and she did give a letter, which I have given to the clerk, and she would like council to have it.
Okay, we submitted a letter.
It doesn't come out from the head of the mouth too good for me.
Could you speak into the microphone, Mrs. Berth?
We used to live in Hickory, and now we live in Closon, but we still own the lot there, Lot 11, 019 is the last part of the Sidwell, and my main concern is, they already, cars already cut through by I don't know how much going down Hickory, and then there's a curve, and it goes right over Cherry to Rochester Road, and if Cherry goes through to Livinoy, my opinion is that it would increase traffic from Livinoy to Rochester Road going right by Morris Elementary School, which would endanger the lives of the kids. That's my opinion, and that was going on when we still lived on Hickory, over 20, almost 25 years ago.
We submitted a, we submitted a letter which should every person have to...
Thank you.
...two-year-old, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon, is that available, or is it just one letter?
It's only one copy.
Could you just send it, send it down, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak this evening? Come forward, ma'am. Good evening, could you tell us your name?
Deborah Gonzalez. I live on Cherry Street, and right now, it's a dead end. If they open that up, not only is Morris Elementary School, but there's also Robinwood Park that's right on that street, and people cut through all the time. Right now, most of the subdivisions in Troy, I think, have a roundabout way of getting from one mile road to another, so that you're not driving straight through, and it really discourages traffic from taking those shortcuts. If they open that, it's going to be a thoroughfare all the way down, so...
Thank you. I think I should let those that wish to speak this evening, this is not something for City Council to decide whether we're going to pave this road and open it up, this is a decision for us to decide whether we, as the city of Troy, are going to pay for this pavement. Mr. Lucari, did you wish to say anything this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm sorry, and this is my fault, last time that we met, I iterated that the road would go through to Livinoy, that is not the intent, it will still dead end there, it's not going to go through, so there's not going to be all that cut-through traffic coming in off of Livinoy, that's not our intent at all.
But that, that's true, but the decision tonight is whether the city will pay for the concrete and the infrastructure for the street, not whether it would happen or not happen.
Correct.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes, yes, sir, come forward? Nope, sir, you've already had your time, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, it's been many years since I've been up here in front of you. Mr. Pennington, I met you before, years ago. My name's Michael Lamb, I live at 327 Neville Island Drive in Troy, and I am the originator of the petition with Mr. Edward King. I own lots 213 and 214, tax parcel ending in 021, and I own a tax parcel ending in 026. I think one's owned by my, I am a semi-retired civil engineer, and I own a company named Orient Homes that was active in the city for 25 years, now I'm just semi-retired and I noodle around. The property adjacent to the parking lot is owned by Nancy Mosher, who is sitting behind me, and I provided a deed to that effect to, with the petition, I guess it was lost. How can I say this? For 20 years, I ended up with parcels 021, after the end of the development project, I ended up with parcel 021, it was a remainder parcel, so I've owned it for 20 years. At the time, we put sewer in for that property, rear yard drain, and just left it and mowed it, my mother lived behind it. I'm a long-term resident of the city, graduated Troy High, my family went to Troy High. My partner at the time's name was Murray Deagle, Mr. Deagle was in charge of negotiating for property purchases in the area. Mr. Deagle looks tremendously like me. Mr. Deagle made all the contacts with Mr. Kilmer, with the figures and things that he was talking about, I'm probably the most negotiable person on the planet. I did send several letters to Mr. Kilmer, I stopped by his house several times, I was never able to have communication with him, he never called me back, never able to talk to him, I did speak with his wife, who was quite nice, no calls were ever made. Over the years, they had engineering plans which showed the road going to the wall and dead-ending at the wall. Our petition was requesting that the city pave the road to the wall. What else would I like to say? We have tried for 20 years to purchase, acquire, convince the neighbors, anything to get rid of the parcel. Now that I'm retired, I've tried to sell them, I've had them on the MLS, nobody wants to buy them, it's basically an undevelopable piece of property. Mr. Kilmer and Mr. and Mrs. Berth have not indicated an interest to never do anything with their property whatsoever. Several years ago, at the behest of the Engineering Department, I had them prepare easements for the water main and sewer to pass through these two parcels of property and continue on to Mrs. Mosher's property and mine, and they wouldn't sign easements or send them back or respond in any fashion whatsoever. And they wouldn't sign easements or send them back or respond in any fashion whatsoever. Everything was done very cordially and very politely. I've talked to Mrs. Berth, I think, every year for twenty years.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. I think we understand. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
And the last thing is, we have offered to pay our share of the assessments, or the Special Assessment District, upfront, in full
Understood.
-- to the city for any and all special assessments.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Gonzalez wish to speak this evening, or did she already speak? Okay. Come on forward, sir.
Hello, sir.
Could you give us your name, please?
I'm Edward King, a longtime resident of the City of Troy also. We've owned the property through my father for about thirty-five years. I don't know exactly what lots they are, but they're on here. There's a hundred-and-forty-foot of frontage coming to the commercial wall, coming from the neighbor's adjacent property. And we're just looking to, you know, develop two lots back there, so we could have our own personal residence in the neighborhood. And we do have our share of the frontage to support the road, if possible. I just want to get along with the neighbors. Whatever happens, happens.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So, Rand, you want else that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Return it to the table for a resolution. Somebody like to move the resolution to get it on the table? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move E1 as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilwoman Abraham that we approve E1 as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion. Councilman Henderson.
Just a couple of questions. Maybe Nino can answer these for me. But the question I have, if you say the road will not go all the way to Livernoy, so what are we assuming it would end right at the parking lot there that we're looking at?
Yeah, if you look at that southern parcel where you see the kind of curved drive that goes all the way around, that's just about the terminus of where the road would be. And if you go to the northern parcel, where that parking lot ends, right about there too.
And can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Okay. If -- and I understand that builders always pay for these kind of things. If that road is paved, would there be -- who would actually pay for the road from where Cherry ends to the end of that round dirt road? Would that be only the two parcels that are marked Orion? Or who actually would have to pay for the improvements?
No, sir. There's three parcels on the north. It shows two parcels on the south. We're saying there's three lots down there. So you have the Berths. One of the Orion properties there actually belongs to Mrs. Mosier. I do have an unrecorded quitclaim deed. When I did this particular map, I didn't put her name on there. You'll notice that on the petition analysis, her name shows up. So she's got one of the lots on the north side. Mr. Lamb has one on the north side. He has one on the south side. Mr. King with the fireplace shop is on the south side there, where the green area is. That's residentially zone. And then you have the Berths, all the way to the right on the upper top. All of them, if the special assessment goes through, all of them would have a charge for that road.
I don't want to speak for Councilman Henderson, but I think the question was, if somebody wanted to develop that area
Somebody else did it?
Somebody -- it would be up to whoever decided to develop the area as to whether they would pay for that or not.
Yeah, in many instances, the developer will run into a property owner that does not wish to participate in the cost. And then it's up to the developer to either decide to eat that cost or not go forward with the project. But yeah, assuming the city doesn't do this project, a developer would have to negotiate on their own with anyone who's opposed to that, or they just have to eat the entire cost to get their lots buildable. But yeah, the city does not participate for a non-participating resident if a developer is doing that. We do not step in for them.
Correct. Councilwoman Abraham.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, I voted to have this public hearing, because I feel strongly that everyone has a right to speak on this matter. I'm disappointed to -- that I didn't -- what I didn't hear today is what the rationale was for why the petitioners were looking for the city to pay for this, particularly since one of the petitioners is a developer and is aware that this is not something that the city is in the habit of doing. So I appreciate the petitioners coming out. Appreciate the neighbors for coming out and providing their opinion. I do understand that the road could still be made if the developers chose to pay for it, but I'm not inclined to have the city pay for this road.
Any comments from council? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
So just to clarify, Nino, to your recollection, we've never paid for paving of a road for, you know, for open up a new development?
It'll be thirty-seven years in August for me, and not one time.
Thank you.
I think I made it clear for the record the last time this issue came up, that I think this would be a terrible precedent to set for the city. And for that reason, I am against this. Councilman Henderson.
Just, you know, looking at the scenario, there is no other access for those -- I'm going to call it three parcels, because I'm still unclear, O, A, and G Berth. Is that a vacant parcel as well? Okay, so there are actually four parcels that are essentially undevelopable. There's no other access to get to those parcels, correct? Okay, so the people that own those properties, if we were to pave them, put an assessment on the property, they could sell those parcels off at that point. Currently, they're unsellable. So, you know, again, I understand why they're asking for it. If they intend to develop all four of those parcels, put homes on them, you know, that falls into that development area, so I can understand how somebody can kind of roll those costs into that, right? But if the parcels are going to be sold off individually, you know, that's a whole different animal.
Mr. Akari, I feel you're going to say this has happened in the City of Troy since the day that we were a city where there's been vacant property, and it's not up to the city to come in and pave the roads for developers.
I agree with what you just said, but I wanted to clarify for Councilman Henderson that the road itself is not going to make these buildable. They still need sanitary sewer and water brought to the site, and that's not part of this project. So even though the roadway might be there, at their own cost, they're going to have to bring the sanitary and the water into the site, otherwise it can't be built on. The paving alone does not make these buildable sites.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Councilmember Hoderick?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
No.
Mayor Slater?
No. That motion fails. That means that this will not go forward. Next on the agenda is E2, the adoption of the 2016-2017 annual budget and three-year budget, 2017 to 2018 and 2018 to 2019. And I will turn it over to City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the budget, the financial map for the next three years. That was presented during the two budget study sessions, two fifteen presentations, and reviewed internally with staff before that process. It does set the millage rates with a slight reduction due to the debt service reduction and the millage rate, and everything else remains the same. There is a water rate increase as a result of the Great Lakes Water Authority that is part of the budget presentation as well, but no change in sewer rates. We recommend adoption and thank everyone who's worked on this budget. It's one of the most fun times of the year for everyone, and staff has done a great job.
Thank you, Brian. Would somebody like to move the resolution on the table, so we can have a discussion? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
I will move E2, the adoption of the 2016-2017 annual budget and three-year budget as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve E2, the adoption of the 2016-17 annual budget and three-year budget. Discussion. Councilman Baker.
First, I want to commend City Manager Kishnik and city staff and department heads for their transparency in providing the information they provided to us over some budget study sessions and any questions we've had. They've always been very quick to provide the information. I'm going to say here, I am going to support this tonight, but I do want to make two points with regard to specific issues in this budget that I've heard a lot from citizens in the city. And the first one is with regard to what is budgeted, eight-hundred thousand dollars for the east entrance to City Hall to be potentially redone for a welcome center of sorts. I just want to clarify first for those of you who may not know that we are not approving a project at eight-hundred thousand dollars tonight, but we are -- it is budgeted as a possibility. And it's my understanding that any project that does come before -- will have to come before us again to be approved or put down for any capital expenditure such as that for that project specifically. So I know many of you have said things to me, called me or emailed me, expressing concern about that kind of project for City Hall. My support for this budget tonight, again, is for the budget as a whole, but does not mean that we're specifically spending that money. That same principle goes to the trails and pathways. There's a million dollars allocated in here for a segment of a trail or a pathway with a hope for some matching funds. Many of you have also expressed to me that that seems like a lot of money for one little segment. I, myself, in the budget study session, questioned whether or not it's wise to spend that kind of money on a path to nowhere, potentially. But I do understand that there are other views regarding those trails and pathways. But I would like to say this, before anything comes to us, for a specific expenditure for a trail or path, I think it would be very beneficial for the city to have a broader view of what we plan to do, aside from just that one segment. I think that it would be a fiscally responsible thing to say, "This is the first segment we're focusing on, but we'd like to see this segment and perhaps another segment, as well as part of the longer arc or plan." I think that would help convince some in the city and me that we're not just spending money to have one little segment with no plan for any other trailer pathways. But because a lot of what we do is about education, I just want to clarify and make sure it's known for everybody that what we are approving tonight theoretically doesn't necessarily or isn't approving the specific use of funds for those projects specifically. Those will come back before us when there's an actual plan in place. If I've misspoken, please correct me, Mr. City Manager.
No, I don't think you've misspoken. I think it bears mentioning as a supplement to what you've said. This is our spending plan for the next year and three years. And therefore, staff will be spending our time and resources on these projects if this budget is adopted. Now, those -- all the projects that are above the spending limit of the city manager will always come back to the City Council for formal approval by a specific project, whether it's a bid, whether it needs -- it's over the allotted amount of spending authority of ten thousand dollars. So while it doesn't exactly mean we're approving these projects to go forward because they're budgeted, they are budgeted, and we will be working on them. Doesn't mean they're approved to actually implement. And that's what we talked about at the budget session. Just because it's budgeted doesn't mean it's a project that is happening and done deal, ready to go. There are many steps that we must go through. But it does -- the strategies have been identified, approved by City Council. It is where we will spend our resources. And as you said, there's much more conversation to come, right? Especially on a few of the projects. So you're right.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Hoderick?
I also had some feedback. I had a wonderful resident. She's lived here sixty-two years. And at the end of our conversation, she said, you know, it's -- some of this is, I've been here a long time, and it's the old versus the new. And that's the balance that we're striking as a council, as a community, as a citizenry, as a staff, what Troy has been in retaining the services and the quality of that, looking at what we have to have now to be viable, and also looking to the future of what the city looks like. And after I hung up from her, you know, it brought to mind a conversation I've had with my mother, where, you know, here we are in -- what year is it? Two thousand sixteen. And in, you know, if you think about in nineteen sixteen, were city planners looking to try and keep their cities looking like they had in eighteen fifty and eighteen sixty and eighteen seventy? No, they were looking at, you know, what would be the future needs of their community. And to some extent, that's crystal balling. But to a great extent, we see what's making viable regions and cities across the nation. And that's one of the reasons that we're looking at this trails project. And it is part of an overall master plan. We're looking at a piece, but that's not a pathway to nowhere. There is a plan that that fits into and a connection. And the parks in the city were always plotted out with that idea of that connectivity to our parks that are also adjacent to our schools, that spread across the community. We, I think, would be unwise if we didn't keep proceeding to try to do that in terms of making this city a viable place for ourselves, hopefully in the near future, but certainly in the long term. So, you know, the east entrance is a conversation that, when you read it just in the Troy Times or you watch just a little segment of a study session, you might not really get what that's about. But when you've been involved for several years intimately, looking at the challenges there in terms of our customer service as a city hall, we are very wise to be budgeting and looking at how do we keep our city hall and our city staff, a competitive staff, for serving its residents, for serving planners coming into the community. There's feedback all the time that right now, it does not allow for that. This has gone on for years. So as we look at this financial -- did you call it a financial map for the next three years? It's been a very carefully constructed. We can debate. It's not perfect. There were human beings working on this. But it's been very thoughtful. There's been hours and hours and hours of our time, staff time, resident input, reflection, and looking at the region. And I think it's a product that we can be proud of. I'm a taxpayer in the community as well. I don't want my dollars wasted. And as I approve this budget, I do so feeling that it's the right map for setting the priorities going forward. And I look forward to working and traveling on that map. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Just my two cents. There was quite a discussion during the study sessions and very productive, and it makes it easier for tonight, when you have those discussions in a study session, and it makes it very simple for me. So I do support the budget. I thank staff for everything they did to make it easy for us. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks again to staff. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. So we will move to postponed items. There is one postponed item, H1, in agreement with North Woodward Community Foundation for Use of Public Property for Troy Family Days Festival. And I see Mr. Kazupski is here from North Woodward Community Foundation, if there are any further questions this evening. But I would like to present a resolution and put it on the table for further discussion this evening. There should be a copy, a yellow copy, for each council member this evening. And I would like to preface that with, I did sit down and have a conversation with and have a conversation with Mr. Kazupski regarding the $10,000 in the contract with the city of Troy. And after that conversation, I decided that I didn't think it would be in the best interest of the foundation and the city of Troy to sit at this table and rewrite a contract. I don't think that's how things should be done. So I looked for an alternative that could get us past this budget for the foundation, because I don't think there's anyone, and I don't want to speak for everyone on council, but I don't think there's anyone on council that wants to see Troy Days die. And I understand that if we didn't do something with that $10,000, that there's a good chance that the festival would die. So having said that, I would look for a solution tonight to take care of that issue, the $10,000 issue, and then let's wait and see how the next festival is. And after that festival, sit down in a study session with city council, the foundation and staff. And if we are going to rewrite the contract or change the contract, to me, that would be the time to do it, oppose this. So having said that, I would like to propose a resolution. And that is to approve funds for fireworks, which are known to be approximately $6,902, and defer $3,098, and review the agreement again after the 2016 Troy Family Days Festival with a joint study session between Troy Family Days and city council. And a decision on the deferral will be made after the 2016 joint study session.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve the resolution that was read into the record this evening. Further discussion? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Just to be clear, that study session will be after the 2016 Troy Days?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought it would only be fair that we would give the festival another year to take a look at the business operation. I did talk to Tom in length, along with Councilman Henderson. And there are many things that are going to happen this year, better sponsors. This festival has always been more successful after the first year. People get to know the site. And there's other, there's other reasons to be optimistic about 2016. So I'm pretty confident that after 2016, we can tweak this contract and make it better for everyone. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Best of luck. We'll talk to you soon. Thank you. Next on the agenda is regular business, board and committee appointments, is I one. There are no mayoral appointments this evening, so I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Pennington for city council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two city council appointments. One is to confirm the appointment, the Building Code Board of Appeals, a five-year term, Amanda Anderson. And the second one is a confirmation of the appointment for the Employees Retirement Board of Trustees, Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust, a three-year term. And that is Mark Ozarsik as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Baker, that we appoint Amanda Anderson as the representative for the Oakland County Health Department to the Building Code Board of Appeals, and Mark Ozarsik to the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees/Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust for the term that expires 12/31/2016. Is that 16? Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you to those that have volunteered to work on those committees. I two is board and committee nominations. There are mayoral nominations this evening, but I'm going to pass on those until I am ready to appoint all to the Global Troy Advisory Committee. We're getting close, but I want to do that all at once. And I think I'm going to wait on the Volunteer Firefighter Incentive Plan nomination at this point. So I will turn the microphone again to Mayor Pro Tem Pennington for city council nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council has one nomination for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Paul McCowen, who is an alternate currently, and I'd like to nominate him as a, for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is that for the term that Kenneth Courtney?
Yes, for the term expiring 4/30.
2019.
Yes.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate, I lost my page, Paul McCowen, to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the term that expires 4/30/2019. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. No other nominations this evening.
No, we do have a couple of applications. And like you said, we thank you for everyone looking to step up for these committees.
Thank you. I three is a, there is no request for closed session this evening. We did have a closed session prior to the meeting this evening. I four is a contract ratification with the Troy Communications Supervisors Association, better known as TCSA. We have an introduction by Jeanette Manning, our Human Resources Director. Good evening, Jeanette.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. I'm very pleased to be here to introduce our tentative agreement that we reached with the Troy Communications Supervisors Association. The agreement is a five-year contract with wage increases and provisions similar to our other recent contracts. City management supports and recommends ratifying this agreement.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeanette this evening? Thank you. I think we asked most questions at the closed session. Thank you. Somebody like to move that resolution?
I'll move I four, contract ratification, Troy Communications Supervisors Association, TCSA, 2016 to 2021 as printed. Support.
By Councilwoman Abraham and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve I four, the contract ratification for Troy Communications Supervisors Association, TCSA, 2016 to 2021. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your hard work on that contract. I five is the approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the B R A, proposed fiscal year 2016-17 and three-year budget. Mark Miller, Director of Economic and Community Development, will make an introduction. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. On April 19th, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority recommended the budget that's before you this evening. And really quick, what the brownfield does is it offers property owners to have a tax capture, to have reimbursement of eligible expenditures of cleaning up sites and demolition of functionally obsolete buildings. And we have two active brownfields. One is the TCF Bank on the east side of Coolidge, a little bit south of Maple Road, and that was the old Carbinian asphalt facility. They only capture approximately $3,000 a year for repayment of eligible expenditures each year. The other one is a much larger one, and that's M J R. They did have some contamination on the site, but it was also considerable amount of demolition of the old Kmart store which was there. And the capture is approximately $85,000. And that, that was a loan. So all of that capture goes back to the revolving loan fund. And what's good to know is the loan fund is increasing in size. And we have approximately, I was on the wrong page, in this current fiscal year, $181,000 at the end of this fiscal year available to loan out for new projects. And at the end of next fiscal year, which is about $260,000. And we use that as an incentive for cleanup of properties or demolition of functionally obsolete buildings. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you, Mark. Somebody like to move that resolution? Councilman Henderson?
Move I five, approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority proposed fiscal year 2016-17 and three-year budget as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we approve I five, the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority proposed fiscal year 2016-17 and three-year budget as printed. Discussion. The vote?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. I six is the approval of the Troy Joint Local Development Finance Authority, Troy Subcommittee Proposed Fiscal Year 2016-17 and Three-Year Budget. Once again, Mr. Miller.
Once again, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. On April 25th of this year, the L D F A did recommend the budget which is before you. And I would also note that the L D F A is also a certified technology park and a smart zone. And what is a little disheartening is that the smart zone area or the L D F A area is still reducing in tax capture. And in budget year 2018, it will bottom out at about $135,000 of tax capture. And then it will start to raise very slowly. So it's, given the circumstances, it's still reducing in amount of tax capture. We set aside in this next fiscal year coming up, just $78,000 for operations support to Automation Alley, which is in the smart zone. And then we'll have $53,000 available for infrastructure improvements. And we're going to dedicate that to move across Troy, which is located in that area. And the smart zone includes businesses such as Altair, the Scheffler Group, Sequo Tools, Automation Alley, N B S, and some other businesses. I also would note that I have been in recent contact with the State Treasurer's Department and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And they are in the process of reviewing our application. It will take a little bit of time for the extension from starting in 2018 for another 15 years. And it will take time, but they are reviewing our application. And they will review the satellites first before they get to, because we're still not near the end of our life, our end of our life is 2018. But it's positive news. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Somebody like to move this res, Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I will move I six as printed.
Support.
By Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve I six, the approval of the Troy Joint Local Development Finance Authority, Troy Subcommittee Proposed Fiscal Year 16-17 and Three-Year Budget as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. I seven is the approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority proposed fiscal year 2016-17 and three-year budget. Once again, Mr. Miller.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of council. On April 20th of this year, the D D A did recommend approval of the budget that's before you this evening. I just to kind of give a general summary for some of those who may not know this, but in 2013, we revised the plan to take out of the tax increment financing portion of the plan, the properties which were at negative capture. And what that did is it allowed us to have positive capture. And then the city agreed to float bonds utilizing the full faith and credit of the city and AAA bond rating to pay off the bonds which were originally taken out by the D D A. And then, so therefore now, the plan was revised so that there's only three functions of the D D A. One, to service those bonds, which are about $900,000 a year in expenditures. Set aside funds for maintenance along the corridor, the right-of-way, the median. And also, this is the first year that we've set aside $25,000 for administrative costs for city staff, which we have not been doing in the past. It's note that we spent approximately $177,000, $180,000 a year for maintenance of the Big Beaver median. And with that, I would just note that the tax increments keep increasing. It's about 1.2 million in the upcoming year, 1.3, 1.4 million. And also, we are going to build up a fund balance in the future years coming up. So it's a positive picture.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Miller? Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move I seven, approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority proposed fiscal year 2016 to 17 and three-year budget as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Baker, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve I seven, the approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority proposed fiscal year 2016-17 and three-year budget as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. I eight is an amendment to Chapter 20, Water and Sewer Rates of the Troy City Code. Mr. Darling, our Financial Services Director, is Paul Trossberg, and also is here available, our Superintendent of Water and Sewer. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about the amendment to Chapter 20, which is reflecting the water rate adjustment as discussed during our budget sessions, and reflected in the budget as presented by Mr. City Manager Kistnik. The water rate adjustment is really the reflection of the increase from the Great Lakes Water Authority charges to the city. And we're proposing a rate increase from 3440 per MCF to $38.50, which is a $4.10 increase. Or, and the average residential bill would be about $16 per quarterly billing. And so again, this amendment is to Chapter 20 to reflect the changes as presented in the budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom? Councilman Baker? Did you want to move this resolution also?
Sure, I'll move I eight, Amendment to Chapter 20, Water and Sewer Rates of the Troy City Code as printed.
By Councilman Baker, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I eight, the amendment to Chapter 20, Water and Sewer Rates of the Troy City Code as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
Move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the items on the consent agenda as presented in the packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. There are no memorandums in future council agenda items, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I will call on Rosemary Karnacki, Troy resident. Thank you for your patience waiting this evening.
I met one of his colleagues from -- recruited a young woman at Athens High School, and I was part of the election committee, and as we counted absentee ballots, I was just thanking him for his recruiting of this young lady. She was wonderful. But my purpose for being here tonight, I wanted to thank everybody for this opportunity to speak before our mayor and our council for just a few moments. I wanted to say thank you, maybe you don't hear that often enough. I'm a long-term resident of Troy, and I've watched the city develop, change, and grow as we all have. Both domestically and globally, we are being observed, not only for our diversity, but how we govern and lead. As an avid traveler, I've been able to see and enjoy many wonderful cities, but world-class cities are safe and walkable. I am excited about the new dog park and the walking trails being considered. Troy offers a choice of dozens of fine restaurants just moments away that feature any type of cuisine one would enjoy. We can shop at world-class shops just right down the street. But the best cities offer terrific museums and nature centers. I am here to say thank you again for your vision and understanding of how important it is to our citizens and our visitors. Both cultural stops feature programs for our children, families, and our visiting guests. Your funding was accomplished without drama, animosity, or citizen discord. I am here to acknowledge and applaud your efforts and wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Anybody want to respond to any of those comments? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Come back next week.
There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Any comments from council this evening? Councilwoman Hoderick?
One of one of the opportunities we have as council members is to join join together with businesses when they have ribbon cuttings around the city, and we all make our best effort to make as many of those ribbon cuttings as possible. Guess I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to the mayor, and it's his role as in the ceremonial position of the city to to represent us, and boy, does he -- it's amazing how many places he gets. The other night we were teasing, I think I saw him more this week than I did my husband as we went from event to event, and it's it's a rewarding thing. One of the things we try to take opportunity to do in addition to congratulating the businesses is we ask them, how has it gone as you've built here and worked with our city staff to develop your property? We had a ribbon cutting last week at the New Hilton Garden, which is enjoying just a wonderful startup. They had a soft start, and they've already been sold out or almost sold out several nights. We took the opportunity to ask the the general manager there, you know, what was it like working with the city? And we heard nothing but accolades, specific commentary about our building department, our fire department, and inspectors. And I'm here to say we pushed, we we probed and gave them the opportunity to, you know, maybe say, well, we did have one little issue, nothing. And the project, the construction manager, I'm trying to remember all the titles, who works in many, many municipalities, just said, you know, this is this is a world-class municipality to work in, and you should be proud of your city staff. There was one issue that they have, and it has to do with the light timing, and already, just by giving that little bit of feedback to staff via an email that I sent, that is being rectified. And time and again at these ribbon cuttings, that's what we hear, or at least that's what I hear. And I want to encourage staff, I know that that's hard work, to turn around and respond as quickly, to be as thorough, to be as welcoming consistently, business after business after business. And you are representing the city well in that work, and I very much appreciate it, and I want to call it out publicly. I want to encourage it. Please let us know, staff, you know, when we can be helping. It's about having one another's backs, locking arms together. And, you know, I know the Troy Chamber tries to step in as well and understand issues and and not to point them out and exploit them, but to work through them together. And it's really a pleasure to run into that, and it's what will continue to make our city a world-class city. Thank you.
Council comments? Councilman Henderson?
Two things. First off, we've had the pleasure, the last two meetings of having Mr. Frank Plisga before us, and he represents a disease in his family that is unknown to me, but and I'm not going to be able to read the medical term, but it's chronic fatigue and immune dysfunction syndrome. And he's set up a walk, and the walk is this Saturday, May 14th, at Troy Beaumont Hospital between noon and 1:00. And he's spent a lot of time, and this affects his family deeply, so I think we'd be remiss if we didn't bring that up and and mention that to people. So if this is a cause that you want to get behind, this this Saturday, May 14th, at 1:00 at Troy Beaumont. And secondly, thank you to the city manager and staff on the pickleball courts. The senior crowd will be thrilled. Appreciate that.
Any council comments?
Pickleball, eh?
It's very popular, whether you know it or not.
I did not know that.
Are you 55 yet?
No.
Okay. Just two quick comments. I've been kind of pulled for a while to get involved in Facebook, and so I have have taken the plunge, and I have a Mayor Slater Facebook page that I'm going to try to use to communicate this office to to those that want to listen to what I have to say. And I want to thank Maggie Hughes for putting that together for me, and she's my guardian angel over my Facebook page, so to speak, so thank you, Maggie, for that. And I am converting my own personal email to mayorslater@troymichigan.gov, so I am separating my personal to my city stuff, which I've been encouraged to do. So I just want to make a couple of comments. And I am keeping this Facebook page very professional, so I would encourage the same comments who were made tonight by Rosemary Karnacki to my Facebook page. Next on the agenda is reports. Any comments on the reports this evening that were in the packet?
Mayor?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hoderick?
I think it's under report, yes. I appreciate the report commenting on the nationwide increase in opioid overdose that we're seeing. It gives gives a reflection on what we already do in the city of Troy and our community with the Troy Community Coalition. This is an issue that is hitting every socio-economic group, and communities like ours are extremely vulnerable. And the fact of the matter is, is that the prevention upfront is key. We've seen time and time again the articles and information that really encourages especially being vigilant about painkillers used with our teens. When we take our teens in to have wisdom teeth, it's been an automatic that you get a prescription for a painkiller that can really lead to tremendous problems with addiction or a knee injury at a soccer game when you go to the ER. Parents and teens need to be mindful that the pain that you might withstand for a couple days will go away. An addiction from a medication that you take to get through the first 24 hours of something may never go away. We are seeing deaths in people that you just it's just so unnecessary. Our coalition, our police department, our first responders are doing everything they can after the fact. They're also doing proactive efforts as best they can, and we need to have word of mouth. These are discussions we need to be having at every opportunity so that we can get the word out that, yes, a prescription for pain can lead down a very, very dangerous path. And I just wanted to call that out, and I appreciated the report that was included in the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the reports this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. We've already had our closed session for this evening, so thank you for coming tonight. We are adjourned.